I was really loud.
Yeah, it was definitive. It was loud.
I'd like to welcome you all to the monthly school board meeting. And our board.
February 27th.
Here.
Thank you. February 27th, 2023, meeting New Caney Independent School District trustees at 6:01 PM. Let the minutes show, the decorum is present with all members in attendance, with the exception of Ms. Tompkins and Mr. Trout. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Sharp and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and honor the Texas flag to be led by Ms. Harrell.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to come here and work for the best of our kids. God, I thank you so much for what you are doing in the district. We've got a desaster with them as we make decisions to protect our students. We thank you for all that you do to our new president and be kind. Place the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, item two on the agenda is recognitions, one of our favorite parts of the meeting here. This is going to be presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. We've got four of our schools here tonight, and the first one we'd like to recognize is Oakley Elementary with Ms. Angelic.
Making sure all our peeps are here. This is a large group. So Maria, come on up. Is Ismania here? Ismania Paulson? Oh, there she is right there. Okay, y'all come and stand beside me right up here, and we're going to face the board. So, okay, good evening, Mr. Calvert, board members. It's great to see you all this evening. And I'd also like to introduce to you quickly Ms. Nollenberg, one of our assistant principals, Ms. Baker, our counselor, and Janice Chambers, our other assistant principal, are here with us this evening, too. So I am beyond excited to get to talk about these amazing people right here. And I'm going to start with Adriana Linares. She is one of our fifth grade students. I would love to just put her in my pocket and take her home, but I'm not sure that her mom would be okay with that. So Adriana has been a student at Oakley for the last two years. She is hardworking and kind, and she comes to school every day ready to not only do her best, but to also help her peers do their best. She exemplifies school pride, the seven mindsets, and the blast values we strive for across our campus. Adriana has continually achieved success academically and personally with her huge heart, determination, and generous spirit. Her teachers brag on her often and recognize the hard work she puts in every day. She is also part of my fifth grade advisory group, the Crazy Kids. She helps out around the campus, including helping out in the library daily. She's always encouraging to her friends and teachers. I'm excited to hear about the things she achieves as she moves through her school career and after. It is an honor to recognize Adriana as Oakley's Elementary's outstanding student. Okay. Nope, sit here. She's like, do I get to sit down yet? Next up, I would like to recognize our teacher, Bobby Duncan. Ms. Duncan is currently a RISE Special Education teacher at Oakley. She consistently goes above and beyond to ensure the students in her classroom are successful. Taking on a new role this year, working to support students with behavior deficits, Ms. Duncan has embraced this opportunity and continues to serve as a role model and mentor for other teachers. She always has a smile on her face, even during a full moon. Not only does Ms. Duncan provide an amazing learning environment for her students, but she also serves as our special education team lead, providing support, guidance, and encouragement for her team. She is always willing to help out no matter where the need is on campus. She will problem solve and find a way. Ms. Duncan has a servant's heart, always putting students and their well-being first. Thank you for allowing me to recognize Ms. Duncan as Oakley's outstanding teacher. Okay, next up, we have Elise DeRocset. Elise is one of our para-professionals at school. She's our tech para. Ms. DeRocset, lovingly known as Ms. D., because we can't all pronounce her last name properly all the time, has served at Oakley for the past two years as a para. She currently works as our tech para, helping students with their technology skills and projects in the computer lab. Students love attending her class because she is always positive, supportive, and encouraging. Ms. D. is a go-getter with energy and enthusiasm, always willing to help out where needed. In addition to her role, she also serves as our backup nurse, not an easy task, and volunteers to help out at school even when she doesn't need to be there. With a heart of gold, she approaches each student with a smile and a love that goes beyond words. She has a positive attitude that is contagious. It is a true honor to be able to recognize her for the person she is and the hard work she puts in day after day. Please join me in congratulating Elise DeRocset, Oakley's outstanding para. Next up, we have Maria Reyes, our custodian. Maria is extremely hardworking and kind. She always has a smile and a willing attitude. When she is called on the radio to help with things around the building, she always responds with a smile in her voice. Maria is positive and calm, willing to do whatever it takes to make sure students and staff have a clean, well-maintained place to work and learn. Not only is her job important to her, but her relationships with the students and staff are a priority for her as well. Maria will go out of her way to check on or follow up with students and teachers. We had a student pass away just after Christmas time this year, and Maria even took the time to go to the visitation and pay her respects. She is a joy to work with, and we greatly appreciate her hard work and dedication. Maria Reyes, thank you for being our outstanding custodian. And last, but definitely not least, we have Ismania Paulson. She is our child nutrition employee who is very hardworking and strives to ensure that students or staff are well taken care of every day. According to her manager, Carol Way, Ismania is very outgoing and always willing to help her coworkers and team wherever needed. She loves serving and getting to know all the students and is always asking how their day is. She is such a joy to have in the kitchen. Ismania always has a smile on her face and works hard to serve all students with a helpful, friendly disposition while ensuring efficiency, which we all know is extremely important in the school cafeteria. She is a true gem, and we are blessed to have her. Oakley's outstanding child nutrition employee, Ismania Paulson. And thank you. These are our Oakley peeps.
All right, next up this evening, I'd like to recognize Porter Elementary and Dr. Slade.
Well, we know we just had a break, but we had a little bit of life circumstances, you know, come about at Porter Elementary, but I still would like to recognize. Come over here. All of our employees. First, I would like to recognize Vanessa Garza. She is hardworking, compassionate, she has a can-do attitude, she's an inspiration for all students at Porter Elementary. She is a mentor, she's a member of Student Council, and she's on the A Honor Roll and a student ambassador. Vanessa. Yes. So we're very honored. Oh, that's great. And then next, we have Ms. Beckler. Ms. Beckler has been at Porter Elementary how long, Ms. Canales? Twenty-five years. She is an EL para. However, that's her title, but she's really, you know, the master of all things. So anything that we need done, she's always willing to jump in and help. She is so dedicated. There are even students who, there are parents who come to our school to eat lunch with their students, and they would have, they had Ms. Beckler as a para professional, and they always have just great things to say about her and how they, how the relationship, the enduring relationships that she's able to build with Porter students. And so the parents are very receptive to her and look to her. She's just a great, she's a great ambassador for Porter Elementary. And I don't know what to say about the man of the hour here, but Richard Minshew. He is our head custodian, and I can tell you, he is so hardworking. He is a great communicator, straightforward, solution-focused. He reads my Monday memo, and if there's anything that he knows he needs to jump in, he is always right there. And I cannot tell you how we have parents all the time, new parents, that will come in our school, and they'll say, this is a great building. How old did you say it was? And it is no, it's due to Richard and his crew. And so he is always making sure that the students have a clean, nice environment to eat lunch, to go to class, for the bathroom. He's with us every step of the way, and I really count on him, and I can't wait for him to be in our new building. And next, we have Ms. Lawson. Ms. Lawson is joyous and energetic, proactive. She is our pass pace teacher, and so she works with students who are, need her help. And so she works very well. She helps our teachers, gives them lots of strategies to help those students with significant barriers, and we're so glad to have her leading our behavior modification group, and she is a wonderful addition. She helps students reach their full potential, and what I love about Ms. Lawson is she believes in every student, truly every student, and she believes everyone can learn and everyone can be successful at school. We're so lucky to have Ms. Lawson. And I did want to recognize last, Ms. Beasley. So she was brought to our campus because the other lady went to West Fork, and so she was brought in later to be our manager, and she jumped in, I mean, they're short-staffed. You know how it is in child nutrition. And so, but she is so organized and just quick-thinking, resourceful. She makes the lunch line look easy, and it is not if you've done lunch duty at all. And so we're so proud. She came in and just took over, just like she'd been there. So we're so proud to have Ms. Bonnie Beasley as our child nutrition manager.
All right, we're going to keep this theme going with Tavola Elementary and Ms. Bruce.
We also have several that are out today. I want to thank you for the honor and privilege to be at Tavola and be entrusted to serve with these amazing people. Our student that we have chosen is Graciela Castillo. She's not here tonight, but she's an outstanding student who demonstrates her academic excellence and leadership qualities in the classroom daily. She's an extraordinary, she pursues excellence, and she has a strong work ethic. She maintains a positive attitude towards learning and willing to take feedback and improve herself in all areas. Gracie is a pleasure to have in her classroom. Ms. Melinda Butler. This is her second year at Tavola in the Child Nutrition Department. Melinda always has a smile on her face and is willing to learn and help others. She's willing to do whatever it takes, and she feeds all our, all 900 of our students twice a day. Melinda attends every day with an I-can-do attitude. Melinda makes a great team member. She's loved in the cafeteria, and she has a great contagious attitude. Thank you. Ms. Benita Padilla. She is our custodian. She's the first one in the building every morning. She comes running, if I'm in that front parking lot and she gets to the back, we come running to try to hit that alarm. I scare many mornings. Melinda is, sorry, Benita is in the House of Mahalo, which is the House of Gratitude, and she displays her gratitude every day with her work ethics. She's a wonderful, caring person, and she helps keep Tavola beautiful. She's kind and wears a smile, and no task is too small or too big for her, and she handles her job every day with grace. Thank you, Benita. Ms. Rufier is our teacher that we're recognizing. She has been with the district for 11 years and served aid in, she's been a teacher for 11 years and served aid in New Caney ISD. She is currently a dual-language teacher in second grade. She has been a voice for our district, serving on the D-LAC Committee. She's our GT coordinator, and she has been a curriculum writer for the district. Ms. Rufier is well-known in the Tavola community, and she makes kids feel special by attending every extracurricular activity that we hold. Thank you, Ms. Rufier. And I'm sad that you aren't able to meet Ms. Campazano. She is our EL para. She is also the House of Akura, which is House of Possibility, and anyone that comes in her path, she lets them know that anything they try, if they're possible at it. Whether it's adults, and we need a little mentoring, or if it's our children, she is the in-class support para. She makes whatever person she's looking at at that moment feel like they're the only person in the room. She's flexible and willing to do whatever it takes. She wears a smile, and my favorite saying is, I got you, Ms. Bruce, I got you. As an administrator and as my friend, I would love to clone her because the world needs more Ms. Campazanos in our corner.
All right, next up, Ms. Babs and the Learning Center.
Ms. Babs.
All right, first of all, I want to say thank you to the board and Mr. Calvert for allowing us to come in and recognize just a few of my staff members. I wish I could bring everyone up here, but these are the lucky ones for tonight. So I want to start off with Joni Johnston. She is our special ed teacher. She has 43 years of education, teaching all grade levels. Thirty-nine of those years are in Texas, teaching history, ELA, PE, health, and also special education. She did teach four years out of the country as a missionary, so thank you for that. She has also been a coach in her 43 years, so if there's any coaches out there, you understand exactly what she's had to go through, too, along with being a special education teacher. So we'll just leave it at that. But she spent her, the last eight years at TLC, like I said, as our special education teacher. And just to piggyback on what everybody, this lady is amazing. She will do whatever we ask. I should add Chromebook cart manager to this list for this year. Sorry about that. But, and sadly, Ms. Johnston is retiring at the end of this year, and she will be greatly missed at the Learning Center. She'll be very, very hard to replace, so I would love to give her a big round of applause. And next, I have Angela Almaguer. She is the registrar, the admin assistant, backup nurse, bookkeeper, receptionist, what else? Lunch duties, restroom duties, pretty much whatever we ask. But she's always got a smile on her face. She's very positive. She will never come in upset or anything like that, so I just, we all enjoy her positive attitude at our campus, especially at our campus, sometimes we need some extra positive attitudes, so Ms. Almaguer makes up for that. So I appreciate everything you do, Ms. Almaguer. And next, I have Ms. Antonia Westbury. She has had 22 years of experience as a custodian. Six of those years she was in Huffman, and then she got smart and she came to New Caney. And so she has actually been at the Learning Center for 16 years. And so I would put her up against any custodian in this district. She keeps that building amazing, and of course, it is the oldest building in the district, and you could not, you would not be able to tell that by coming into the building. Her and her partner keep that building immaculate, and you never see them. You look like, when do y'all do this work? Like, but if you do need something, I mean, she's there. It's like she's a ninja. She just comes out. Anyway, but it's like she knows what we want before we know that we need it. So I appreciate everything that you do, Ms. Westbury, so thank you. And then I have Ms. Sandy Roscoe. She is the child nutrition. So a little background, we have, we share our cafeteria with New Caney L. next door, so we share their cafeteria staff. So Ms. Sandy, she takes care of the lunches for us. And so they make the food at New Caney, and she brings these huge, I don't even know what they're called, but they're huge things, hot, hot, whatever, back and forth between the two campuses. And they're not, they're not light, are they, Ms. Sandy? They're pretty heavy, so she's pretty strong. But she's always smiling, never misses. In fact, I think, I know of one day she missed this year, and that's because she was taking her citizenship test, which she passed, so. So I want to thank you for everything that you do and the way that, you know, you work with our children and our students. It's just a special, special thing you do, so we appreciate you. And then last but not least, I'm not going to talk a whole lot about, but I would just want to, this is Ms. Denise McGee. She is the AP slash counselor, and if this lady wasn't in the building with me, I don't know what I would do. So I just, I'm throwing that out there. That's off the cuff. Sorry, Ms. McGee, but I want to. Again, thank you. I appreciate everything y'all do.
Wendy went to TCU.
Wendy did.
Where'd she go?
HBU.
HBU.
They're going to play a video.
TCU.
TCU.
I thought you were Horned Frog.
No, she isn't.
All right, Ms. Cozad. You going to let us know why we've got a lot of New Caney cheerleaders here tonight with medals around their necks? You going to, yeah, come on up.
So while they're coming up, first of all, thank y'all for having us. We are very excited, and these are excited kind of people, so they're excited to be here. So while they're lining up, I'll just give y'all some stats. NCHS Cheer competed at the Houston Regional Competition in November in place first and received their bid to Nationals. At their next, at their next competition in January, they placed 16th in the state of Texas in UIL 6A Division II. And then at Nationals in Disney, they finished first in the prelims, earning an automatic bid to the finals. Very exciting. In the final competition, they scored a 93.6 out of 100 points, placing second in the nation out of the 32 teams who qualified for the national competition. Number two in the nation. Congratulations. We are incredibly proud of these girls and their coaches, Coach Boone and Coach Marches. Thank you for all your work. I'd also like to take a chance personally to thank you guys. I met many of you guys for the first time last fall. I love your leadership and love your commitment to our school, so thank you for all you do. Now, the floor is yours.
Thank you for that.
We'd also like to thank Sportscast Media. I know there was a video playing while they were doing that, but we'd like to thank him for providing this little tribute to the girls, and congratulations, it was a huge accomplishment. Obviously, the first in school history to play second in Nationals is amazing, so congratulations. All right, item three will be tabled. We're going to present that at the March Board Meeting, so we'll move that to next month. Item four on the agenda is open forum with no sign-ups for tonight, so we will move on to item number five. And this agenda is reports and proposals of board members. Ms. Perkel will give an update on the most recent Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met earlier this month, and Mrs. Gates discussed surrounding district pay comparisons for different categories of employees. She also discussed starting teacher pay, general pay increases, and preliminary staffing for fiscal year ending in 2024. The committee also established its budget priorities for the 2023-2024 school year, which are, one, staff year two of West Fork High School, two, a general pay increase for all employees, three, additional positions based on campus needs, and four, capital outlaying. And for those not familiar with the committee's structure, we do have input from every different campus level, so when we're looking at additional positions based on campus needs, we are getting that information from those in the trenches with firsthand knowledge of what they need. So we really appreciate those of you here who serve on that committee and bring that information to us, so thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Ms. Sharp will give an update on the most recent Instruction Committee meeting.
So the Instruction Committee meeting, the Instruction Committee met January 26th. It was a very interesting meeting, talking about our advanced academics and what they offer for the district. They listed the benefits, they provided GPA bump for our students that take that. The staff, anytime you have to teach an advanced class, it's going to offer the staff more time to grow. I know that in my own profession. It provides college tuition savings. As a parent, I'm very pleased with that one. Advanced academic offerings. We currently offer 15 AP courses and 11 dual-credit courses. That's a great deal. There are some
And On Ramp, it's $149 per student. So it's really good programs, and I'm very proud of what our district offers.
Thanks for that update. Anybody else have any other proposals?
I'll just update on the TASBO Legislative Conference was held last weekend. As most of you probably know, right now, we are in the middle of the 88th Legislative Session. So so many times, we hear complaints and concerns about things like star testing and funding, and many of those things are handled at the state level. So if you have concerns now, is a great time to take those to your representatives. We are all, as a collective whole, doing that as well through our legislative priorities, and many of us making trips to Austin. We're in a really unique position in New Caney ISD, that the chairman on the Senate Committee on Education is none other than our own state Senator, Brandon Cretton, and he's very receptive to things. School choice is going to be a huge hot-button topic this session. Everything that we have heard is saying that it will not be at the expense of public school students, but now is the time to have your voice heard in Austin, because these are things that I think are important to all of us who are invested in public education. So just a reminder that that's happening now, and now is the time to reach out and make those connections.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. And I second that.
Yes, yes, I know you've been in Austin many years already.
Definitely contact your representatives, and I believe we may be putting together, you know, some, our Legislative Affairs Committee may be putting together a trip to go and meet with our legislators as well, so. Appreciate the updates, and definitely those that serve on these committees, we thank you. Item six on the agenda is our superintendent's report, presented by none other than our superintendent, Matt Calvert.
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize Ms. Cholet right now to continue the recognitions tonight and talk about some awards a couple of her folks recently got, so Randy, come on down.
Okay, both, the Purchasing Department and the Accounting Department, both were recognized at the Winter Conference for TASBO, which is Texas Association of School Business Officials. The Purchasing Department received the 2023 TASBO Purchasing Award of Merit, and that is where TASBO recognized 71 educational organizations this year for best practice in the area of purchasing operations. The Award of Merit began with TASBO in 2009, and it recognizes Texas school districts that are committed to following professional standards in acquisition of goods and services. I would like to read what the TASBO Executive Director, Tracy Ginsburg, says about this award. She says, "As Texas school districts face ever-increasing pressures to use funds efficiently, we're honored to recognize the work our honorees do to streamline operations, comply with regulations, and set the standards for how to utilize taxpayers' dollars. These organizations have not only demonstrated their professional purchasing operations by documenting their district's policies and procedures, but have also shared these best practices with colleagues throughout the state. A lot of work went into doing this. You have to pull a lot of information. You have to pretty much open up everything you do, and I would just like to congratulate them on this reward." The Accounting Department received the Award of Excellence in Financial Management. 23 districts in the state of Texas received this award. This award was established in 2020, and it's given to Texas school districts that demonstrate professional standards, best practices, and innovations in the area of financial management and reporting. This is a very stringent criteria. There's 11 different areas that they have to address, and this is what the TASBO Executive Director said there. "These organizations have gone above and beyond to demonstrate transparency by meticulously documenting their district's policies and procedures. Not only have they showcased the ways they monitor spending, improve budgeting, implement controls, and enhance financial reporting, but they have shared their best practices with colleagues throughout Texas, helping even more educational organizations to better utilize taxpayer dollars." So I'd like to congratulate them on their efforts.
All right, next on the list tonight is Ms. Monroe and Ms. Gracyk, recognizing some of our counselors. Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Calvert and Board of Trustees. The Crest Award, Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in the State of Texas, is an award sponsored by the Texas School Counselor Association. This recognition is earned by demonstrating the effectiveness of a strong school counseling program that contributes to students' academic, personal, and social, social success as well as career development. Less than 5% of school districts in the state and less than 3% of schools were recognized this year for Crest. I'm proud and excited to say that New Caney ISD is among the districts with five campuses receiving this award. I would like to acknowledge the following campuses and counselors. Dogwood Elementary, Amanda Flowers. Kings Manor Elementary, Kristy Fernandez. Porter Elementary, Brittany Crawford. Valley Ranch Elementary, Carrie Shaver. Woodbridge Forest Middle School, Catherine Garza, Annika Perez, and Brenna King.
All right, next on the list tonight is Ms. Monroe and Ms. Gracyk, recognizing some of our counselors.
Good evening, Mr. Calvert and Board of Trustees. The Crest Award, Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in the State of Texas, is an award sponsored by the Texas School Counselor Association. This recognition is earned by demonstrating the effectiveness of a strong school counseling program that contributes to students' academic, personal, and social, social success as well as career development. Less than 5% of school districts in the state and less than 3% of schools were recognized this year for Crest. I'm proud and excited to say that New Caney ISD is among the districts with five campuses receiving this award. I would like to acknowledge the following campuses and counselors. Dogwood Elementary, Amanda Flowers. Kings Manor Elementary, Kristy Fernandez. Porter Elementary, Brittany Crawford. Valley Ranch Elementary, Carrie Shaver. Woodbridge Forest Middle School, Katherine Garza, Annika Perez, and Brenna King. This award is a reflection of the hard work and commitment to student excellence in all areas. It is also a testament to support received from others. I would like to thank campus administrators, district personnel, Mr. Calvert, and the Board of Trustees for their support, which allows the implementation of a comprehensive school counseling program serving New Caney ISD students and one worthy of winning this award. Thank you.
All right, there's got to be one guy that's got to follow up all that, and that's going to be Mr. Blake Carroll. Come on down and talk to us about some potential rezoning we're going to hear.
I appreciate the order, Ms. Lee, with all the awards, recognition, and now I get to talk about rezoning. Okay, after the February meeting, we went back and evaluated some of our northwest part of the district, especially the Porter's Mill, the Maple Heights, and the Highlands, coming in with new subdivisions. And Crippin Elementary is way over projections. If we don't make any rezoning in this current, for next school year, there'll be over 1,000 students. It's way past the capacity we're going to handle that. So we looked at looking at the least harmful in the move, logistically speaking, and we would like you to consider to move about 130 kids out of Timberland. Portion of that school neighborhood already goes to Sorters Mill. We'd like to bring most of it with them down to Sorters Mill. If we don't make the move, Crippin will be a little over 1,000, and Sorters Mill will be right at 700. If we make the move, they'll both be about 825, 850. And we'll probably talk about it in more greater detail, but right now, with the influx of these new neighborhoods, Maple Heights is adding homes left and right every day. It's, it's just growing past what our projections was, so we need to make this potential rezoning move. Any questions or concerns about that area?
We appreciate your sensitivity to that and working to make sure that the whole neighborhood stays together to go to Sorters.
Yeah, and that's what, when Mr. Calvert and I sat down with the rest of the group, that was the logistically sound move. We didn't want to start moving other neighborhoods over there then a year from now or two years from now. If the bond is successful, to try to move them back again, that would be too many moves. So this, they would stay with Sorters if, if we were successful with the bond, so.
Parents have expected, you know, an opportunity to speak up, and we've had approximately seven or eight emails. Mr. Wrestler responds to those, and everybody's been given the information that they feel they need. You know, like I said, nobody really liked it. There's always somebody on the other side of the line that's not on right now, but Mr. Carroll and Mr. Wrestler have been responsive and got parents' information, so they've had an opportunity to provide feedback.
And once he sent the rebuttal back out while we were doing it and with the reasons, we haven't had a response since, and that's been over 10 days.
Sorters Mill is able to handle that many.
Yes, ma'am, they're right around 700 right now, and their capacity is 1,950 would be perfect, so they could add another 130 kids and not miss a beat. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, in case y'all didn't hear, we called a bond before the break, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Dennis Alters. He was a member of our Bond Steering Committee to come give a report and what their recommendation was to you guys. So, Mr. Alters, it is all yours.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for having me tonight. Like Mr. Calvert said, my name is Dennis Alters, and I'm one of the representatives for the Bond Steering Committee. We met back early February to present the kind of final package that the group came up with for the bond. Just to kind of go over that a little bit more in detail with the public here with us. The Bond Committee, the Bond Steering Committee was comprised of about 30 individuals from the community. Overwhelming majority of the members from the community are parents of students that are currently in the district, as well as taxpayers and voters of the district. Every level of education was represented, elementary, middle school, high school, even all three comprehensive high schools. Their CTE programs, we brought staff in from those because some of these things that we're looking at required some input from them. As the group was kind of being set up, in November, we first started meeting, and that's when we were tasked with four topics. The first one being, is this best, what's best for the kids? And the next kind of fall in line with the district goals of student success, safety for students, and are we being responsible with taxpayer money? Everything had to filter through that by the end of the day, and so that's what we did. The first meeting in November, we, Dr. Powers, Mr. Calvert, provided us with the demographic report from PASA. That was on the website, and it just talked about the growth in the district. Some of those numbers are pretty staggering. We believe that this bond is going to put us in a good position to continue to manage that growth. Like you heard, we were rezoning in the elementary school. Hopefully, this bond will, will help us as that happens. We also were presented with items within the district that we thought were needs and items that were wants. We vetted those items pretty meticulously. We were polled at the end of every meeting anonymously on, on what we thought, hey, does this work, does this not work? I believe that's what helped us come to the conclusion on a lot of items that, you know, maybe we thought were wants, but when we, we looked at it, we said, no, those are needs. Those are something that the school district needs, and so we adjusted that list accordingly. In the second meeting, we met with Doug Witt, who's a New Caney ISD financial advisor. He also works for Samco Capital, and helped us understand kind of what the bond capacity is for our district. I know we passed a bond in 2018. The cap on that bond was $200 million, and that's because of the growth in the district at the time. Right now, based on the growth, I think we're just a little over $7 billion, which allows us to go out and get about $720 million in a bond. And so he walked us through that, what that looks like. He also brought a perspective from the legislator on how they're making us present bonds now. For instance, this won't cause a tax rate for, a school tax rate raise for our district. We're already capped out at the 50 cents. There's nothing, nothing's going to change that. However, due to the state legislator and the laws that they passed, on the ballot, the first wordings you'll see is, this is a tax increase. And so they've created laws that, that make it difficult for us to go out and get a bond when it's needed because of the confusion that they, that they will make us put on those ballots. So that'll be an uphill battle, but I believe that we can, we can definitely take care of that with good communication. We went over all those guidelines, and in January, we met to finalize what we believe is the best bond package for this district at this time. Dr. K, again, Dr. Powers, Mr. Calvert, provided us with the financial numbers behind that, and that's how we came up to the $695 million. All of those things, again, due to the way the legislator says, we have to present them in a way that breaks it up into different bonds. So Proposition A is ones for general school facilities, so that'll be anything having to do with buildings that, that are, classes are being taught in, any types of trainings for teachers, any types of things like that. The second part of it is, is they said, you can't include extracurriculars in that, so that's Proposition B. So Proposition A is $634 million. Proposition B is $61 million, and that's for extracurricular facilities across, across our district. Now, the bond currently, as it sits, kind of some of the peak points on it is, we will get four new campuses, two brand-new elementary campuses, two brand-new middle school campuses. We will do CTE expansions at all three high schools. West Fork Phase Two will happen. Porter Phase Three will actually be able to be completed, which is fine arts and CTE, and the expansion and build-out of CTE at New Caney High School as well. It'll allow for the administration to move out of the annex of New Caney by getting them a new building as well. That will allow for 2,500 seats at all of our high schools, all of our comprehensive high schools, I should say. We'll get two more middle schools, two more brand-new elementary schools, and we'll replace New Caney Elementary School, which lifecycle has just, it's, it's the oldest school in the district right now, apart from Porter, who's getting a new build, building this year. That will bring us to roughly 6,000 seats for our school district, which is needed, obviously. We're busting at the seams at a lot of schools. This is the second board meeting where we've rezoned three schools to make capacity for elementary kids. So 6,000 seats, we're not going to impact the tax rate for, the school tax rate, and it will touch every campus within our district. Lifecycle improvements, updates, build-outs, changes of classrooms, but I think the focus that we came up to is the 6,000 seats will allow us to safely educate our students in an environment that they don't feel crowded, they don't feel cramped, and we don't, we don't put them in an unsafe situation. Some of the other dates, just to remember, April 6 is voter registration deadline. Early voting will start April 24 through May 2, and then the election day is May 6. So I, I know I'm up here speaking for the Bond Steering Committee, but I know we have a number of people here. I know that we stand behind the package that we brought before the board that y'all voted on, and we look forward to helping in any way possible to get this pushed.
Thank you, probably. Yes, thank you.
Speaking of those members of that committee, is there, I know a couple of you are here, so I'm going to put you on the spot. If you served on our Bond Steering Committee, would you stand up real quick? Don't be shy. Raise your hand if you want. Yeah, just thank you, Dennis, for sharing that information. You know, that's, that's what we wanted. It's, we're all about these, these are your schools, and getting parents involved, getting our taxpayers involved. Feel really good about our committee, the makeup of it, the process we went through, and so thanks, Dennis, for presenting that information to us.
I'd also like to add, Dennis, and I appreciate the committee, because again, we're understanding that we're not making decisions on this next year. These decisions this committee helps us make are going to last for five to seven to 10 years down the road, so being that this number that we're going after is a large number, but again, we're trying to make decisions.
trying to make decisions today that are going to be affecting our students and our, and our capacity as we continue to grow exponentially very quickly over the next two years. So I guess this number's large, but they've done a great job vetting. They took things that were on the table, took things off the table, and gave us the best package that at the end of the day is going to affect 6,000 students and allow us to have the facilities we need to move us in to eight years from now. If we don't make these decisions now, we're going to be in, it'll put us in a bad situation. So I appreciate Dennis and the group for the hard work that they put in.
Yeah, I'd also like to echo that. I appreciate every one of the committee members. This is probably one of the most transparent, since I've been on the board, processes that has happened in a bond, a bond election, and putting this together. Appreciate each and every one of the, the committee members who represent many people from this district. So to say this is needed is an understatement. We are growing exponentially, so.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Transparent was the word I was looking for, and it's exactly what you said, Craig. I feel like this process has been very informative. We are all on the board, taxpayers, property owners, business owners. So I would personally not take calling a bond lightly, not just the actual cost of the bond, which everyone is going to have the opportunity to vote on, but most people don't realize that elections cost the school district money. So having the community buy-in on the election and calling it in the first place and recommending a package that we believe touches every campus and has been vetted by community members is very important. I can only speak for myself, but I still think I can only speak for myself in saying. So thank you, Dennis.
There's one more group here tonight that I'd like just to recognize for a minute. As, as you've heard, the theme of the district is, is growth, and with growth comes the need for leaders. And so our aspiring administrators that are kind of the, the next round-up when, when the time comes, that group is here, they go through a process with Ms. Chaufer and Ms. Gates to get ready to be the next round of campus leaders when, when the time comes and they need to step up. So if you are here with our aspiring administrators academy, can y'all stand up real quick? There are definitely leaders on their campuses. They've been vetted by their principals, and we are always looking for who's ready next, and this is a very strong group, and I appreciate you guys taking that next step in your career to learn to be administrators in New Caney ISD, and especially taking some time out this evening to come check out a board meeting and see what it's all about. So appreciate y'all coming tonight.
These are a lot of fun. Item seven on the agenda is the Consent Calendar, consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of finance reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, and consideration of annual 2021, 2022 Texas Academic Performance Reports. I apologize, one of our board members actually had to step across the way for a medical issue. Thankfully, he's certified to do that, so we still have four, and we're going to vote on them. Are there any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? The motion, the motion has been moved and seconded. There will be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion is approved. Item number eight on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for land development and real estate issues. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will be take, will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. The time is 6:55 PM. Here we go. The board ended its closed meeting at 8:06 PM and will now reconvene an open session. Item nine on the agenda is consideration of approval of CPR 02 for Porter Elementary replacement for text dot and site concrete changes presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. This is a change order our construction department is requesting due to some updates to paving and other site drainage things that text dot is requiring, as well as DC and planning to help drainage on the site for Porter Elementary to replace the campus.
Are there any questions for the discussion? All right, is there a motion to approve CPR 02 for Porter Elementary School replacement and text dot and site concrete changes? All right, there'll be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number 10 on the agenda is consideration of hiring principal of New Caney High School, presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. It's a great night for New Caney High School. As their next leader, I'm happy to recommend Mr. Jonathan Powell to be the next principal at New Caney High School. He did a great job throughout the process, overwhelming choice by the interview committee, as well as cabinet. He has done a lot of great things for our district as a teacher at New Caney High School, assistant principal of New Caney High School, associate at New Caney High School, then over to Kiefer, now back to New Caney High School. So the, the elf on the roof is back to his original location, and looking forward to all the great things that Jonathan's going to bring with him back to New Caney High School. So I'm very happy to recommend him for that position.
All right, are there any further questions or discussion about Mr. New Caney? Got you a new nickname there. All right, so is there a motion to approve hiring the principal of New Caney High School? There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved. All right, there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:09.